At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce the moderator for today's program, Mark Garrity. Mark is an attorney with Garrity &amp; Garrity and also serves on the Chamber's Government Affairs Committee. So please join me in welcoming Mark.
Thank you, Mary Claire. Good afternoon to everyone. Let me get out one thing, in case we need this for later. This is a timed matter, so if anyone goes over their time, we will be putting up a notice that they have one minute to go, and then a red sign telling them to stop. And if they don't stop, I'm going to zap them. So, all right. The format for today will be that each candidate will have two minutes for opening and closing remarks. And we did a very scientific division before as to what the order will be. And each candidate will then be asked four questions that they have been provided with and asked to respond to those. They'll have two minutes to each of those, and then we will take the questions. We'll get through as many as we can, in no particular order here. And they technically will have two minutes each to answer the questions, but if they can do it in less and we can get to more questions, so be it. And, okay. And before I introduce each candidate, Mary Claire has provided me with an introduction that we will review. And again, this is in no particular order, other than it's by district. We have District 3 and 4 that we're dealing with here today. Ron Troyer, at the end, is a 17-year resident of Hudson. From 1994 to 2000, he served on the City Council, representing District 5. While serving on the Common Council, he chaired the Public Safety Committee, served on the Finance Committee, the Joint Fire Board, the Tourism Bureau, and currently, Ron is a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Ron has served on the Christian Community Home Board of Directors from 1985 to 1994, serving as President, 1987 to 1990. He has also served on the Wintergreen Board of Directors. He's a manager of, forgive me if I mispronounce, Cook? All right. Funeral homes, Cottage Grove in St. Paul Park, Minnesota. He's a graduate of the University of Minnesota and Xavier University. Ron and his wife Jean have two children, who are both graduates of Hudson High School. Also in District 3, we have Paul Radamacher. Is that right?
Radamacher.
Radamacher. Okay. Paul Radamacher is a three-year resident of Hudson. Paul is the Director of Real Estate for Delight Outdoor Advertising, Inc. Through his profession, he has attended hundreds of City Council, County Board, Town Board, Planning Commission, and Zoning Committee meetings in small towns such as Poshkin, Wisconsin, and large cities such as Minneapolis. He is the President of the Stone Pine Overall Neighborhood Association and a member of the Knights of Columbus. Paul and his wife Nicole have a daughter, who is 15 months old. In District 4, we have Bill Canuth. Bill has served on the Common Council or the City Council since September of 1997. While on the Council, he has served on the Public Safety Committee, the Hudson Chamber Tourism Committee. He has served as the Council Liaison on the Board of Education, the Hudson School District Intergovernmental Council, and the Industrial Development Committee. Bill was the Manager of the Wisconsin Job Service in Hudson from 1983 to 1996, and was an Employment Specialist for the Department of Industry, Labor, and Human Relations from 1965 to 1982. Bill is a graduate of the University of Wisconsin-Madison, as an economics major with a Labor Management Relations specialty. Bill and his wife Judy have lived in Hudson for many years. District 4 candidate, James Mayer. James Mayer has been a business owner since 1978. He has extensive experience as an educator in public and private schools, from elementary to university levels, and community education for all ages. He received his PhD in 1980. James has been a business and professional member of organizations promoting international understanding and exchange in cultural, governmental, educational, and commercial matters. He directed the Lutheran Immigration and Refugee Service at Fort McCoy in Sparta, Wisconsin, during the Cuban Refugee Crisis in 1980. James is a member of the Neighborhood Association, Hudson Memorial Hospital Association, and a founding member of the Family Council for the Christian Community Home. James and his wife, Dr. Vicky Mayer, have lived in Hudson for 20 years. The order for the opening statements will be Mr. Troyer, Mr. Canuth, Mr. Mayer, and Mr. Radamacher. Mr. Troyer.
It really is an honor to come back and have some time again with this group. I've done this before, and it's been always rewarding, and I deeply appreciate your contributions as a chamber to our community and the efforts you make to make this a much better city. For six and a half years, I was privileged to serve on the City Council, from 1994 through the year 2000. It was a challenging and difficult time. There were special interest groups that used a great deal of high pressure on us, but I served with some of the finest of Hudson's citizens and some great Americans, and I think we have kept during that period of time Hudson to be a city that we can be proud of and glad to live in. Some of the things that face us in the future, though, need attention. And the attention that got my attention were the events of September 11th. I'd served six and a half years on the Council, and I could have just sat back and let someone else do that. But the events of September 11th have led me to believe that we have to take control of those things, and strong, effective leadership is important, more so now than ever. We need a city that is managed by people who have experience and who are prepared for whatever the worst can be. And let's hope the worst doesn't happen, but we're in a time when we need effective leadership. So I don't want to sit back. I don't want to just let someone else do that. I want to be part of that. During that period of time I served on the Council, we were active in keeping our property taxes not only low, but reduced them some, and they've not been raised in the eight years since I began on the Council. I'd like to see us continue in that way, and we can only do that by looking at what our expenses are, what our revenue streams are going to be, and effectively managing them. We all got a surprise in this community when we got our tax bills, to be sure, but the city was not part of that surprise, and it's important that we have effective leadership there that can do that. Continued industrial development is something I think is important. I was part of the Council that developed the land where our present new business park is there. When that new business park comes online, tax property will add $1.7 million to our tax base. I think that's an important thing. When do we go from there? And we're going to talk more later. Thank you. Where's Mary Claire? She was supposed to be waving. Oh! See, I was looking right past her.
That happens to me all the time. Right past me.
First thing you're going -- can everybody hear me? The first thing you're going to discover is that I am not a poly speaker. I don't consider that one of my attributes, but I think I am a knowledgeable person, and I think I have provided, in my four and a half years with the city, a good contribution to what I think is probably one of the finest city governments in the state of Wisconsin. I was going to start out this introduction by giving a little talk about myself, and somehow I saw things flash before my eyes by the time Mark got done, so I'm not quite sure what I can add as to what has already been said. However, I am Bill Canuth, so if you wonder who he is, I'm the short one that sits on the City Council, okay? And probably the most bald one, too. And I'm probably one of the more quiet ones. That doesn't mean I'm not paying attention as to what's going on, nor that I am comprehending what has taken place, nor that I have not studied, so that when I go to the meetings, I know what we are trying to deal with. And I think that is extremely important. I have a few things that I feel that the city has worked on, and I have been a part of it. Mr. Troyer's already alluded to one of them. The city of Hudson has been able to keep its mill rate at the same or slightly decreased for the last eight years. I have been on the Council four and a half years. The city's share of the property taxes has not risen during that period of time. During the time that I've been on, we've had to deal with some very strong legal issues. We've had to deal with the liquor license regulations and new dancing. And that's where I stop. Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. It's nice to look out and see all the familiar faces. It gives real meaning to your title of the event, which is "Good Morning Hudson." Hudson is a mix of wonderful people, places, cultural institutions, historical government -- historical and governmental places, as well as all the people I have the pleasure of greeting when I walk around town. You may note, I don't know if it was mentioned on the bio here, the intro here, but it's been a lifelong avocation for me to wander around and talk to lots of people and citizens wherever I've lived about community life, education, government, and things that are really important to every community where I've lived. I particularly enjoy this in Hudson, where we've made our home for the last two decades. Here are some concerns that stand out from my conversations with our people in the community, and some ideas which I would like to take to City Council. And I'm going to just do a little -- I'm a teacher, and we try to lean on visual aids. The first thing I want to mention to you is that I think we need to have a moratorium on growth. We need to have a moratorium on growth in order to -- what it means is to make sure that all present, past, and future objectives, costs, and benefits -- I've got to read to make this fast -- are planned and fully accounted for, very clearly accounted for, to Hudson citizens, before taking another step of expansion. I'm going to move fast, so I don't get caught with that zapper. We need to make the working decisions and actions of our local government clearer and more accountable, and more interactive with Hudson's citizens. We need to be careful to monitor and pay more careful attention to the financial, physical, and social impact of growth on water, sewer, and traffic, health, safety of our environment -- excuse me -- crime, fire, medical emergency services -- he's going to zap me -- surrounding countryside and farmland, education in our school systems, small independent businesses at the center of Hudson's community and economy, our small-town community, and its needs for raising children. All of this, all of this is to protect, preserve the environments, history, character of Hudson to pass on to our children and our great-grandchildren. How did I do?
It's a tough act to follow.
Good afternoon, actually. I was going to say good morning. My name is Paul Radamacher, and I'm running for District 3, and I want to thank you for the opportunity of having us here today. I want to start off by explaining to you part one of why I'm running for the City Council of Hudson, and I guess it first and foremost starts out with that I am a believer in being involved in the community and doing what you can to make the place that you live in a better place to live. And I have a strong interest in local government, and I always have. Secondly, I am the President of the Stone Pine Neighborhood Overall Association, and will be on that Board of Directors for the next two years. And couple that with the fact that I'm a member of St. Patrick's Church, which is one of the two churches in our district, I have a natural or a direct communication link between or for over half our constituency on at least a monthly basis. Third, and maybe perhaps, perhaps, most important is that I looked at the potential makeup of the City Council for this coming year or two, and I realized that there really wasn't anybody on there that represents people like me. And what I mean by that is, there are many residents throughout the city of Hudson, and maybe more predominantly in District 3, that are -- that have young families, that moved here to raise a family, to start a family, because it's a beautiful community. And I want -- I think it's very important to have a voice for young families on the City Council. And finally, as Mr. Garrity alluded to, I may not have the experience and age, but I do have 10 years of wonderful experience through my job by attending hundreds of City Council meetings and planning commission meetings, zoning committee meetings, where I've seen bad government at work and good local government at work, and I can pull from that 10 years of experience to help make our City Council, and therefore our city, a better place to live in the future. Thank you very much.
We now have the four questions that were sent to the candidates, so they have prepared responses for this. And I'm just going to start at this end, and we'll move down, and then reverse, and go back and reverse, okay? So, first question. You are living in one of the fastest-growing communities in the state. How do you envision the city in the next five to 10 years in terms of growth, development, and planning?
We have two minutes?
You've got two minutes.
Okay. I'm going to do a lot of reading for my notes, because I've done a lot of thinking about this, and I'm trying to cut down the verbiage. If we keep going the way we're going, I envision a tragic mess, including among other things, excessive housing prices, valuations in taxes, emergency services stretched to the limit or beyond, loss of our small-town character, and many more things. Any city can sprawl, and most cities around the Twin Cities have. There's no achievement or quality to that. On the other hand, I can envision Hudson choosing a better future. The Wilder Foundation study of the St. Croix Valley after the 2000 census found that the Hudson area is one of the fastest-growing areas in the valley. It has more newcomers than any other part of the five countries studied on both sides of the river. And several in our community have told me a large portion of residents stay, as well as borne out with the study, a large portion of residents stay or come here because they value the rural, small-town atmosphere. That needs to be more than just a sales pitch to get more people to come here and crowd us. It should mean a good place to raise children with safe streets, clean, healthy environments, good prosperity, good schools, easy access to country and parks, as well as a place where we can know our neighbors and look out for each other. Very important. We have to recognize, if we have -- we can have that now if we recognize its value now and get to work to preserve it for ourselves, our children, and our grandchildren.
Thank you. Mr. Canuth?
Okay. I'd like to respond to that. Excuse me. I'd like to respond to it in the fact that the city already is doing studies, and if you've been following the Council meetings, you will know that we are already proceeding and looking at the issue of annexation. We are looking at the capacity of our wastewater plants, and how much expansion we can actually afford, and we are already looking at ways to slow up the growth in the city of Hudson. My concern is with slowing up the growth of the city, that we still have a good industrial base, so that we can provide for the people that live in our community. I have nothing more. I really would like to stay on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Radamacher?
I'm against any further expansion of the boundaries of the city limits. We currently have approximately 1,800 residential units that are yet to be developed in the city, which means that in the next five years or so, we will have, if you take three people per residential unit, another 50, 400 residents in the city of Hudson, which means that we'll be approaching roughly 15,000 people within the next five years or so. I think that's -- the people I talked to said, you know, that's enough for now. Let's wait and see what it transpires from this, you know, growing of our community. And let's just take a deep breath and have a slow exhale as far as to any further expansion of growth outside of what we've already been planned for. The city's done a good job of planning, and, you know, for the growth that is going to take place in the next few years. And we don't need a moratorium on growth, as Mr. Mayer, I think, had pointed out, but I think all I need is people on the City Council that say no to more expansion, and I'd be one of those people.
Mr. Troyer?
Well, I think the physical boundaries of our city the next five to 10 years are going to stay the same. Actually, we've added over 600 acres on the southeast side of the city, and there's only been 25 homes built in that area right now. So we have lots of room for residential growth without expanding the physical boundaries of the city. We know what our capacities are for the acreage that we have presently in the city boundaries. We can do that and use the capacity of our wastewater treatment facilities without becoming a critical problem. So is there going to be growth? Yes, we're going to continue to grow. Does the city itself physically need to grow? I don't see that, and I'd be an advocate in favor of curtailing that kind of expansion that has been pressured by developers, not by other people. So we can look at it that way. I think that the continued development of our industrial park, there's a second phase that's ready to be developed, and we're going to fill that industrial park. And once we go past that first phase into the second phase, we're going to continue that, clean and environmentally friendly businesses. I think that's going to make a big difference in our tax base. And I think we also have to be very careful as we watch over the next few years what happens with Governor McCollum's initiatives that he's suggesting, where we're going to reduce the aid to the cities. We all have to plan very carefully, and if we do careful planning, which is through long-range planning and through our own city planner, I think we have an excellent city planner who's done a wonderful job for us. So I think it's in control. While we can grow, we'll continue to be a great city.
Thank you. The next question, and starting with Mr. Troyer and coming back this way, is, there continues to be increased traffic at Carmichael and UU. What role should the city play to address this issue?
Well, I think the city has done something already significant this year, because capital in the capital bonding issues that are taking place for 2002 does include monies to put stoplights at UU and Carmichael. So that will be done this summer. The bonding bill, about $500,000, which, again, shows some wisdom on the part of the Council, because it's about half of what's usually done, being conservative, but about $70,000 of that $500,000 bonding bill will be used to put stoplights in place. I think the relationship that we have with the county there is important. Remember that only one quadrangle of that intersection belongs to the city. The other parts of it are Hudson Township, and the county is involved in what happens there. So we have to have a relationship, and I think we've started to develop a healthy relationship with the county, to have discussions with them, how we can better control that traffic. But it's just not UU and Carmichael. It's also 11th and Cooley or 11th and Presview that needs attention, too. And there's money's been put in the bonding bill there. So we're looking, and if I were part of the Council, we'd look at those issues very carefully about how we can control those traffic. The issue at Vine Street and Carmichael, I think, will be resolved. It's just going to always be a busy intersection, but stoplights will help.
Paul?
Well, I agree with Ron. I mean, he put it very succinctly, that the city's already taken steps to correct the problem with the stoplights, which will be in place this summer, and there's really not much more that can be done until the stoplights have been put in place, and a study's been done to see if that actually did correct the problem. And Ron's right, there are other areas of the city that need traffic issues that need to be addressed, and those need to be taken care of one at a time. And as they come up through, whether it's the neighborhoods or just common sense, and you see the traffic patterns and traffic flow, and where things are congested, you know, we need to take action on that. But as far as Carmichael and UU, the city's done its job, and this summer, you know, that will be taken care of. And, you know, we'll go from there and see how the stoplight works.
Mr. Canuth?
I have nothing to add, because I believe that the city already has proceeded to take the necessary action to correct the problem of Carmichael and UU.
Okay. Mr. Mayer?
In my opinion, you said we'll take each thing as it comes up and deal with it then. As I said to you, or tried to get out in my rushed statement here about careful planning, I think this traffic congestion is just another example of the many costs of expansion and development that may not show up in the balance sheet when a city rushes to indulge in piecemeal and step-by-step, shortsighted annexation and development of property, saying yes, far too often and not questioning enough. As an integral part of the careful planning, I emphasize, this needs to be a well-reasoned-out, expertly consulted, publicly justified, and limited project that yields a solution that cannot be used as an excuse to spend a lot of money, leading to even greater spending traps, I've heard this well, and further destruction of rural areas east of town with no end in sight.
Third question, and starting with Mr. Mayer, moving back towards Mr. Troyer. The city will collect over 170 -- excuse me, over $157,000 in room tax dollars in 2002. Currently, not all room tax dollars are being spent directly on tourism. What would you do to ensure that all dollars are spent on tourism, and what is your idea of tourism?
That one I have thought a lot about. I've talked to a lot of people. I've interviewed a lot of people, let's call it that, and tried to look into it as much as I can, given the time I've been trying to spend with my -- directly talking to my District 4, I hope, constituents. It seems to me that the goal for the room tax revenue that should be common, I think, is common, to the Chamber of Commerce, Tourism Bureau, the City Council, and the State of Wisconsin, is to make Hudson attractive, make it so attractive as to bring from outside, attract even more people from outside to come and spend money to the profit and prosperity of Hudson and its businesses. This is what should be evaluated in making decisions about allocation. It's time to reexamine the tax, and whether it's meeting its objectives and with what benefit to our community. I'm particularly concerned with these questions in regard to two-bed and breakfasts in my district that are important to the history and character of our city.
Mr. Canuth?
I'm going to start from the reverse end of this particular question, that is, what is your idea of tourism? And the reason I'm doing that is because I know that this is a question that's of particular importance to the Chamber people. I think there is some -- not misunderstanding, but I think there are two different levels of tourism, and the concept of tourism is looked at a little differently from the city than it is from the Tourism Bureau and the Chamber. The city sees that some of those tourism dollars are for things which the city feels they contribute directly to the tourism system. And therefore, with $157,000 that were there, not all the money was allocated to Tourism Bureau or the Chamber, because the city itself was also incurring technical costs which related to the tourism dollar and the tourism spending. That being said, I feel that the city still has to look at how the money is being spent, and I believe we are doing that. And I also believe that if, working with the Chamber, that we will be able to resolve the issues that are there. And I think, without working with the Chamber, that there are some issues that we have to resolve as to the allocation of funds. Also, it should be noted that when the issue did arise, we did not know what the projection would be for the next year, and so the figures that we arrived at were based on only projections. We have agreed with the Chamber that if indeed there are additional monies, that they will be the first organization looked at as for the allocation of funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Radamacher?
Well, if the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism Bureau is looking for an ally on the City Council, you don't need to look any further than me. As a -- one of my majors at St. Cloud State University was in marketing. The last 10 years, I've been in the promotion, advertising field. I understand, and you understand, and advertising clients understand, that you spend money to make money, and the more money you spend on tourism, the more the return back in the community will be severalfold. I believe that the idea of tourism is basically just the promotion of the city to various groups and communities, to bring people into our city, so they sleep in our hotels, eat at our restaurants, they visit our parks and our historical points of view or matter, and spend their dollars here. That's what we want. That's what tourism is, and that's what we need to do as a City Council, is to create the best possible environment for that. And if that means allocating more money to tourism, then that's what we should do. I'm in favor of allocating as much money as possible out of that room tax to the tourism industry, because, again, I believe that what we spend on tourism, we get back many times over.
Mr. Troyer?
Well, tourism is a partnership experience. That is, I think the city and the Chamber are partners in this together, and working together as partners can create not only good tourism, but good cash flow for the members of the Chamber and indirectly to the city and its residents. The 3% room tax that's charged is one of the lowest in the area, and we're glad to be there, but if it's not providing enough dollars for tourism, there's always that possibility of looking at that. And that can be changed by the City Council if they were to choose to do so. Those dollars that were allocated this year by the Council to, not only to the Chamber, but to other tourist-related activities, I think were fair. There are dollars -- There are dollars, it would be nice to be able to give more dollars to the Chamber directly, but the other dollars, and the clear majority of that money, does go to keeping the city attractive, keeping the city visually stimulating. And tourism should be a year-round experience, not just something that happens in the summertime. So looking for ways that we can attract that kind of activities year-round is good. The other side of tourism, excessive tourism, while it's good for business and community, is not something that I hear from the residents that are looking for a lot of. Traffic congestion, the increased cost to our police and EMS services are something that citizens who live here, residents, share their concerns with me. So I'm an advocate of tourism when it's done well and planned well and funded well. And some of that funding has to come outside of government sources.
Last question, of the prepared question. With growth, there is an increased need for services. What role do assessments play in addressing this need?
Well, when I was on the council, one of the things that the city council implemented were impact fees. Most of you know that impact fees are dollars that are collected upfront by, from the developer who collects them from those who then buy that property, to cover the cost of the additional cost of services, which would be wastewater, water, sewer, and parks that need to be developed when we develop areas. So impact fees are something that the city has used and used successfully, where other cities have not had them in place. Hudson is ahead of that quite a bit. Those impact fees have also allowed the council, in the time that I was on it, that when selling property that was no longer used, be able to use funds, revenues from the sale of property to purchase vehicles that are used by the fire, police, and public utilities. So the growth has been funded by the city in the years that I served on, without additional taxes. In this case, it was called assessments being put on people's additional tax base. Overall, over the next two years, I think we're going to have to watch very carefully what's going to happen in city government. It's going to be directly impacted by what happens in state government because of the downturn in the economy. The city presently receives about $368,000 in state aid. And if that's taken away from us, we'll have to control that. So being fiscally responsible is important. And $368 is a low number one compared to what other cities in our area are receiving in state aid. So again, the council's been conservative and they've provided good leadership in that area. And I think it's important that we pay our own way with tax revenues, and we can pay for that growth with our own tax revenues. Thank you.
Mr. Rodemacher?
Again, if you're talking about growth, as far as expansion of growth in the city of Hudson, I'm not in favor of it, outside of what's already inside our boundaries. Assessments from internal growth would play a key part in helping to defray costs of developers and so forth. But I'm not going to be in favor of any expansion of growth outside of what has already been planned for. And so therefore, the question to me is really, is not pertinent.
Mr. Canute?
Well, I think Mr. Troyer very adequately explained the difference between impact fees and assessment. And if there isn't growth, it will be assessment because of what is strictly in place. And the question is whether we'll be able to keep our costs with our present assessments and mill rates within the budget. If we don't provide additional services or we keep them at the level they are at the present time, that may not be a problem. But if we decide to increase our services and we aren't expanding, the answer is it will fall on the taxpayer, and that's a certain reality. So I think that explains basically what assessment will actually do. What the role and assessments in playing this need, I don't think assessment, as this particular question is directed, really is an issue because of the impact fees.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to ask for clarification by the person who wrote the question, or the persons who wrote the question, of what they really mean by assessment. I think that's very clearly needed by what we've just heard. So I need to have a good definition before I respond.
I'm going to answer that. As I explained to your wife on the telephone on Sunday morning. It goes to the issue of if a developer decides to put a development in, I'm using it as an example, if there's a development that is going to go in by the middle school, that if there are people that live along Carmichael Road and a lift station has to be put in, or if there's extra services that have to be put in to get to that development out there, how would that be effective? That goes to the issue of impact fees. It goes to the issue of would you then assess everyone along Carmichael Road or along Vine Street or something of that sort?
Okay. Well, I certainly don't think it's a moot point or an irrelevant question or something that we shouldn't all be interested in. Thank you, I'm glad, because that's what I planted around, but I was beginning to wonder a little bit here, this set of questions. If a city runs a sewer out to new development and may run some of its sewer and water or other utilities through areas that are not part of the development, it's a question of, it's an important question. Whatever the assessment and how it's handled, it's a small part of the total long-range cost of development that can come upon us. If we don't take this into account, we're very likely to jump into some bad decisions that contradict the careful and integrated planning that I have been talking to you about or trying to in my short time. A good example of not taking into account all the consequences of, might not have to do with assessment nonetheless, is the Carmichael-UU congestion, the other kinds of congestion we're talking about, which is a long-range problem that the whole town faces and will have to pay for. I don't think we can say that it's all under control, folks. It's not under control. We have a tremendous pressure on our emergency forces. We're paying all kinds of money. We haven't seen any of the money that's going to come up yet from this old trick about expanding the tax base and keeping our taxes low. That's my point.
The next are a series of questions. They're in a pile. I'm going to read them as they came. And if we do have some, such as, if there's one that seems to duplicate, I will read it quickly, address it. Let's move on. First question, what is your position on the possibility of a new library in Hudson? In particular, one that would be of the same caliber as the Washington County library system? We'll start with Mr. Bill.
I like the sound of a new library. I would like to make sure that everything stays within the character of Hudson and that all of the steps that we need to take are well-planned out, as I've said before, and that the public knows about it and has a good, clear awareness of everything that's happening, as I've said right here.
Mr. Canute?
Okay. That's not a particularly difficult question for me. I would like to see the city of Hudson have a new library. But before I do that, or would endorse a new library, I would like to see that the public wants a new library in the city. And I would like to see that the users of the library are willing to put upfront some money in support of that, because otherwise it's going to fall strictly on the tax base of the people in the city. And it isn't fair to them when the majority of the users of the present library are outside our system. Thank you.
Mr. Rodemacher?
Well, I think it'd be great to have a new library, but, you know, can we afford it? Can we afford to build it? I think you need to look at that. That's number one. I am a conservative individual where it comes down to dollars and cents. Can we put up money for that? Or can we raise funds privately to build a new library? Or is there something that we can do in conjunction? Is there a need for a new library? I've been to our library. I think there is a need for a new library. But again, we have to be able to afford it. And if we can't afford it, then there's no way that we can build it. But if we can assist in any way, private, to help encourage private funds for a new library and helping the planning of a library, then I think that would be something that the council could do.
Mr. Troyer?
Who wouldn't like a new library in our community if that's possible? But what we have to look at is the fiscal cost of that or what kind of responsibilities we take on as a city. Again, the clear majority of the users of our library are not Hudson residents. We need to have agreements in place from those townships and surrounding areas that use our library services. And there has to be some sharing of that financial cost if we're going to move ahead. So it's going to take some significant planning on our part before any groundbreaking is going to take place on a new library.
Next question, starting with Mr. Troyer. Besides bringing more into Hudson, what ideas do the candidates have in order to keep the people and businesses in Hudson?
What's going to keep people here is having to be a safe community. And I advocate a strong police presence in our community. And I was on the council when we put into place a K-9 unit. I think that's made a significant difference to the kind of coverage we have. We want to be a safe community and a community that has good schools. And I think we have those things in place now. And that'll continue to draw people here. Only look how quickly our developments, our filling up with people who want to move to Hudson, you know it's a desirable place to live.
Mr. Rodemacher?
I think one thing we need to address is the tax issue, the property tax issue. I've talked to some residents that they say, well, if things continue as they are, whether it's taxes issued or levied by the city, which hasn't been the case, by the school board or by the county, if things continue, people say, well, then we may have to move out of Hudson. I don't think that's right. I think what we need to do is to look at that tax issue and do whatever we can. With the exponential growth that we've had in the city, we should be able to lower the mill rate and do our part to work with the county and the state to do what we can to encourage them to lower their, or revise their property tax system. I think that's first and foremost. Ron touched on a good point. Yeah, we need to keep our streets safe and we need to provide for good schools. And whatever we can do for that to help create the community atmosphere that encompasses all that, then that's what we should do.
Mr. Canute?
Would you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Besides bringing more into Hudson, what ideas do the candidates have in order to keep the people and businesses in Hudson?
More people into Hudson?
Besides bringing more into Hudson, what ideas do the candidates have in order to keep the people and businesses in Hudson?
Well, right, I'm having a little difficulty with that question. Part of the reason is I'm not sure what more what is. And at the same time, we're talking of limited growth, controlling the growth in our community. So I'm not quite sure where that individual is coming from. I believe if we have an attractive community and we have a safe community and we have good schools, that we will bring business into our community. And we will bring an atmosphere in which people would like to share and live in our community. And I think we've got some of that already. I think it's there. And I think if we continue doing what we're doing, that we won't have any problems.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Well, I share some of the sentiment from Bill here. I also, I think the person probably forgot to write more people on their question. And I certainly am not very excited about that, as you can tell from what I've been saying. I believe that we are, if we keep doing, I already said if we keep doing what we're doing, we're not going to be doing very well. I think we need to consolidate what we have and make a good, clear picture for ourselves of who we are and what we are. And I don't think that any amount of stop signs or stoplights or speed bumps or anything else can be substituted, can substitute for a community knowing itself and caring about itself. As you get bigger and bigger and farther and farther sprawled, you have more and more of the problems that we've seen over in Minneapolis and all the western suburbs. And why would you want to imitate that?
This is listed as a priority question. Two of the first three have already been asked, so, or at least addressed, that dealing with annexation and also room tax dollars. So the third question, what is your position on the proposed Habitat for Humanity Development in the St. Croix Business Park, for or against? Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'd like to yield the jack for that one.
You're the guy on the seat, so let's go. We're running out of time, Mr. Mayor, so.
Well, I'm all for Habitat for Humanity, obviously, but if we're going to really be consistent with what I said, we need to figure out how our total plan is going to incorporate those things into our area that we are considering to be our community. And I think that calls for study and great goodwill to try to do something about it. And I don't know, I really don't know which way I would go on that, but he's got good reasonings and the other people have got good reasonings, and we need to study it, and I haven't had a chance to.
Mr. Canute?
I've always been a supporter of the humanities, Habitat for Humanities. However, sitting on the council and listening to the arguments every way and the expectations, I don't know how I would vote on it either. I think I have to see the finished product before I would make a vote as to what we should do in any particular case. And I think what's happened now is, at this point, the issue has not even arrived at planning as to what is, and yet we're seeing a lot of publicity in the paper and this sort of thing. And I think they're jumping the gun. I think it's an opening ammo, and I'm not sure, I don't think that that's in their favor. Because I think what they're doing is they're creating a climate that when they come to the council, the council's going to feel like their back's against the wall. And it's going to be a real challenge to us to try to deal with that particular issue.
Mr. Rodemacher?
Well, I mean, Habitat for Humanity, just like any interest group, if you will, I don't think the city needs to bow down and say, yes, go ahead, you know, do whatever you want to do. I mean, it's a free country. If they buy property and are willing to, you know, build what they got to build within the code city, then they have the right to do that. I wouldn't make any special, I wouldn't be making special, what am I trying to say? Thank you, Joe. Exceptions for anybody, just because they're of a specific group or not, so.
Mr. Troyer?
Well, the issue of Habitat for Humanity goes to the planning commission, which is made up of elected officials and residents who are appointed to the board. It hasn't gone there yet, and I want you to know that I found the article in Sunday St. Paul Pioneer Press to be objectionable. It was biased in one side. I didn't like its approach at all. And that's not how I would do government, if I were involved in government here. There are still some decisions to be made. We don't have a king that runs our city. The article would lead you to believe that we do. We have elected officials in our community, and it will be dealt with by the planning commission on a healthy way. And so I think it was a cheap shot at a good mayor.
Looking at the clock, we're at, I'd love to ask all these questions, but we've got to keep on time here. Closing statements, and the order, the batting order on this is Bill, Paul, James, and Ron. So, Mr. Canute here.
After the go-around, you can see that I'm not the speaker. But I hope it has showed you that I do have some knowledge of what is going on, and I am capable of making good decisions and I feel properly represent my district. I have no personal agendas in running for office. I don't have anything in the back of my mind that I am pushing for or trying for. All I am doing in running for office is to try to properly represent the people that will be in my district. I have done that for four and a half years. I have always responded to any participant that has contacted me within 24 to 48 hours, depending on how the notification was made. I maybe have not been able to give them the answers they want because that isn't always possible. But I have been there and I have always responded to them. I have responded to citizens outside my district. And I have responded to the people that have special interests. I think that's an extremely important part if you're going to be a good representative of the people of the city. And that is the basis which I would ask that the people in District Four take the opportunity to vote on April 2nd. And please vote for Bill Canute. Thank you.
Thank you again for having us here today. I really appreciate that. I don't lie if you can't see this, but it's a picture of my daughter. And we have a, our family has a long-term interest and stake in the city of Hudson. We moved here for a reason, because we love it here. My parents are here. And it's just a beautiful community. And I want to do what I can to make it a, to continue to make it a beautiful community and to let it grow, make it grow in the right direction. I believe that I can provide leadership and a strong voice for District Three families and all of the residents. I'm anti-growth, anti-casino. I know we haven't talked about the casino. It's not a dead issue, especially if we have a new governor elected. And we need to keep that in mind. I'm anti-taxes, but I'm pro-family and I'm pro-business. And if the Chamber and the Tourism Bureau is looking for a natural Bureau is looking for a natural ally, you've got one in me, in the City Council. All I can say is I'm going to do the best I can, and work, work as hard as I can, and if there's any District Three voters here today, I would kindly appreciate your support and your vote on April 2nd. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry. 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 I want to compliment Mark on, on his good control over the time, and my asking for a clarification that he thought he'd already given, I, I wasn't sure that he'd been involved in the writing, so I wanted to double-check, I was getting them confused. The first words of Chapter Two of the Wisconsin statutes regarding political campaigns are, "The legislature finds and declares that our democratic system of government can be maintained only if the electorate is informed." That principle, and my belief that grassroots democracy is a two-way street between home and City Hall, are key motivators and guidelines of my foremost goals in this campaign, and I hope as an alderman. Shed more light, these are some of the goals. Shed more light on the many ways local government is so powerfully affecting our lives right now. Find ways, including meetings and other ways, to keep people informed about the issues, plans, and decisions that come before city government, before they come and before they're acted on instead of handed down, and to exchange ideas and viewpoints about them in order to come to a consensus in our district to take the local government, to help it in its role in shaping our future life of this community. Grassroots democracy includes, for me, an increasing knowledge, sharing my increasing knowledge with my district about these matters. From attending City Council meetings, I can clearly see great need of more questioning and more Dean Canutsons and less rushing. Our district has many questions we've been dialoguing about, many of them arise from growth and expansion, but even more from getting a, need, the need to get a clear picture of how this has been happening, which points to the need for more interactive relation between citizens and their government. Let's begin by better publicizing one of the most important, let, yet least publicized events for all Hudson citizens, the spring election. This is when all of us have the power to use grassroots democracy to determine the best future for Hudson. Remember, moratorium on growth, along with public awareness, in order to make sure that we have careful planning that the whole community is part of. Oh, you could vote for me if you wanted to.
Mr. Troyer.
My thanks to the Chamber for sponsoring this. Again, it's been a real honor to come and share our views with you today, and I'm hopeful that the residents of the Third District will find me to be an acceptable candidate. Once upon a time, I know, a long time ago, I too was a young person in this community raising my children where they were young, and I also was an older person raising my teenagers in this community, and now my children are grown and I have that perspective in life. So, I think for the families in the Third District, I bring a pretty broad view of what life is like and what kind of experiences people have and want in our community to live here. Was Elton Trueblood, a Quaker theologian, who once said that, "A man has begun to understand the true meaning of life when he's willing to plant trees under which he knows full well he will never set." I think in the six and a half years that I served on that Council, there were lots of trees that were put in place, trees of hope and trees of good lives in Hudson, and I think in the future that more trees will be planted, and I'll be gone a long time, and Hudson's going to be here, and I'd like to think that what we're doing now and what we're going to do in the next two years are going to be something that's going to be important for quality of life in this community. Curtailing growth is one of those things we advocate. Putting safe communities, having strong police presence is important, and all those things, I think my previous experience on the Council lead me to be a good candidate for the residents of the Third District. Thank you.
Thank you to the candidates, and I will turn it over to Mary Claire.
Please join me in thanking Mark for serving as moderator today. We do apologize that we did not be able to get all of the questions answered that were written, but encourage you to talk with the candidates after and ask those questions then too. So, again, thank you to Mark, and thank you to all the candidates for your participation today. And thank you to Wells Fargo Bank for serving as our sponsor today, we appreciate that, and look forward to seeing you on Thursday at the Business Spotlight, and remember to vote on April 2nd. Thank you.